All right, so we're gonna get started because everybody's here and we're running a little late. So first and foremost, thank you for attending on this beautiful evening. I want to thank each of you for your efforts in keeping yourself, your family, and your neighbors safe and healthy. I'm really proud of Delray Oaks for taking this pandemic seriously and doing our part during this unprecedented moment in time. And I'm also really comforted by the kindness and creativity being shown daily, so thank you for that. If you just joined there, just about an hour and a half ago, the Monterey County Health Office issued a mandatory face covering order that will kick in on Thursday, this Thursday, April 30th at 12:01 a.m. This is not in place if anything else that we're still doing. So if you, I have a couple of extra masks if you need one, and I know that other folks in town are making them. So one last note is we are expecting an updated shelter in place. No one knows which way it's gonna go, but if you haven't already, please bookmark co.monterey.ca.us. That's the county website, and that has the daily situation report and anything as it comes forward. So on that note, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 28th at six, well, little after six. And I'd like to just remind everyone to stay muted until you're called on. Kim will navigate that for us, so thank you for that. Kim, can you please do roll call?
She may be talking with the council members. Mayor, I'm happy to call the roll.
Great.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Yeah, I hear.
Vice Mayor Clark. You're muted.
Do you know, if you could make me co-host, I can help with that as well?
Sure.
Okay. Vice Mayor Clark?
All right. There we go.
Okay, Kim muted me, so I'm, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I am here.
All right, Mayor Kerr.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Councilmembers Lindtow and Getzel are trying to join, not currently present. There you go.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public comments. This is for general public comments. You may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at this time. Otherwise, you will do it at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So I see a couple of hands. I'm going to leave it to Kim to unmute as needed, or as she feels fit, sees fit.
All right, I will do that in her stead then. Madam Mayor, if we can start with Gary Krieger?
Got it.
Unmuting?
All right, I'm unmuted, thank you. Mayor, council, I'm sure that we will hear about the reasons for Gagliotti's vote against approving the Pure Water Monterey Expansion supplemental EIR last night. This expansion was the only backup in case Cal-Am DSal does not come online before the CDO takes effect next year. But if you're listening to his laundry list of reasons, don't lose sight of the facts about what transpired last night. This was a straightforward vote to certify a supplemental EIR from one already approved. However, the pro-Cal-Am politicians view even the possibility of a pure water Monterey expansion as a critical threat to the DSal which they covet. This was in stark evidence a few months ago when Councilman Gagliotti argued to suppress the public release of a draft SEIR paid for with our tax dollars until after the Coastal Commission met to discuss the Cal-Am DSal permit. After what in the eyes of many was unethical behavior, the council voted against replacing Councilman Gagliotti as the mayor proposed, though they are as responsible for what happened last night as. Which brings us to last night's vote. It comes down to which narrative you want to believe. The pro-Cal-Am politicians came prepared with a well-choreographed course of reasons that they were going to vote against certification. They disregarded the counsel of their own sequel attorney. They publicly questioned the competency of their own staff and even flirted with accusing some of them of unethical behavior. However, they did not allow the staff to offer any clarification in public or ask for any discussion of the alleged inadequacies within the SEIR. They simply cited chapter and verse before the preordained vote against certification. We can each make up our own personal judgment about who we trust to give us the straight facts, professional public servants, staffs, or politicians supporting Cal-Am. What we can all agree on, though, is the fact that there is now no functioning backup in the event Cal-Am's DSal stalls. There would have been serious even heated discussions about source water and many other things if the expansion of Pure Water Monterey had ever started to move forward. These discussions were outside the scope of the FDR, which will now never happen because the only backup will not be there if it's needed. This decision does not serve the interest of the residents of Delray Oaks, and it may very well prove to be a fateful decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, let's see. Kim Shirley? You're unmuted?
Great, thank you, everyone. Thank you, council. This is Kim Shirley, I live on Baxter Place. I like to speak to the poor leadership we saw from councilperson Gagliotti last night at the M1 Board meeting. I know he received several letters from residents about supporting the certification of the SEIR for the Pure Water Expansion project. After seeing all the letters of support from the greater peninsula, in addition to the resident letters, I know there was a great support for the certification. After all, this was only certifying the potential environmental impacts, allowing this plan to be a backup for peninsula water source and would not move the project forward. Shouldn't a smart decision to be, to have a backup plan, who would deny being prepared? Turns out Mr. Gagliotti can. After all of his time or money for the report and community support for the approval of this SEIR, Mr. Gagliotti found it best to side with Cal-Am supporters and completely disregard our needs in Delray Oaks and the need for the peninsula to have a backup water source. In fact, he went so far as to try and establish a motion that would disregard any plans for expansion of the recycled water project in the future. If we thought he was using political maneuvering for his move to deny the SEIR with this motion, he was clearly increasing the stupidity and shortsightedness of his move. Thankfully, it didn't pass. I hold him accountable for his unethical leadership. Beyond ignoring his constituents, his vote does nothing for Delray Oaks and actually harms us in the end. I had two email exchanges with him last week, and he never shared why he was doing this for Delray Oaks. I don't think it even occurred to him to explain that point of view, and that's because he doesn't serve DRO, only in name only. He serves the men who strive for greater power and money in the Spanish Valley and North County. He serves the political interests that support ag and big business. He does not serve the people of Delray Oaks. He is to blame for his poor behavior, but I also hold Councilwomen Getzel, Clark, and Lindtow responsible. After all, they were the ones who voted to keep him on this board last fall when Mayor Kerr moved to replace his position. He is damaging Delray Oaks. His behavior is costing us money, time, and solutions for our water issues, and those other council members are complacent in these actions as well. If they disagree, then they should vote to remove him before he continues with his rampage and further isolate DRO from the rest of the peninsula. I'd support his removal wholeheartedly, and I'm sure many others will too. Please do the right thing and remove Mr. Gagliotti from the M1 Board. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Mr. Rutherford, you are unmuted, sir.
Thank you, thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I first wanted to just thank city staff for working so hard to make it a seamless transition while they're working from home. I really appreciate that. I was speaking with Karen today, and such a pleasure having her try to continue city business under these conditions, and I do appreciate that, want to recognize that. And also wanted to indicate that the flights from the flight school, the touch and goes, and the constant looping over Delray Oaks has greatly reduced, and I appreciate any of the city staff and leaders that might have had some play in helping us accomplish that, especially while we are all working from home and under a lot of stress. We didn't need that extra stress of loud looping planes. I also wanted to comment about last night's meeting and Councilman Gagliotti's vote, not just for the vote to not certify the SEIR, but also his vote to deny Marina Coast the extra vote despite the JPA contract and despite the process and the procedures that they followed. Councilman Gagliotti often touts the fact that he is one that likes to follow protocol and procedure, yet last night, in order to prevent Marina Coast from gaining the extra vote that they're entitled to, asked that the staff, that his staff, provide further information. So rather than relying on the information that was provided pursuant to the contract and following the proper procedure, he voted to deny them that vote last night. He also then went forward and made the motion to deny certification of the SEIR. I know that I had written him an email asking for him to please explain to me and help bring me on board with respect to his position so I could understand why he was voting the way he was and why he had been presenting the way he was back at the committee meetings. And I did get a response from him, and I appreciate that. The response was, "I received your letter, and it's duly noted." That was the extent of his response to his constituents. This is the second time I've reached out to him regarding the water issue, asking him to help educate me and bring me on board, and that's the response that I get. He is not representing the residents of Delray Oaks. I was disappointed in him last night as our representative. Again, thank you for your opportunity, my opportunity to speak. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken.
Mayor, Karen Harris would like to speak.
Great, Karen.
Getting there, one second.
Have you got her?
Yep. Karen, you're unmuted.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Kerr and city council people. I'm happy to provide a comment to this evening, and it's gonna be short. I too was surprised about the vote at the Monterey One Water last night. I would like Councilman John Gagliotti to please provide an explanation for his vote and reasoning so we all can understand, because we are owed that. I spent probably an hour with him on the road. He was providing me so much of his precious time, and we debated a lot of water issues about this supplemental EIR for the expansion project for the Pure Water Monterey, and I really appreciated that, so I had an idea of what was gonna happen, but I didn't expect to terminate our future. I just don't understand it, so I would really appreciate him taking the time to explain it to all of us, and I really appreciate all your time, all of you, and thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Karen. Any other public comments?
Mayor, I see no hands raised and nothing in the chat window. I would like to point out that you have Councilmember Getz, I mean, Councilmember Getzel has joined, and Councilmember Lindtow, I believe, is co-located with Vice Mayor Clark. Is that true, Kristin?
That's correct. She is actually on my husband's computer, so that's in another room, so that she can participate. But she needs to be unmuted, please.
Okay.
Looking, stand by.
I got it.
You got Jim?
Yeah, and will she start the video, please? Okay, I got it.
We'll deal with that.
Okay. Any other public comments before we move on? Sorry, guys, bear with us here. I don't see any other public comments, so public comment is closed. We're gonna move on to number three, which is proclamations. The first one is National Teachers Appreciation Week. We have a lot of teachers in town, so, and they're going through some stuff particularly right now figuring out how to be at home, so. Proclamation, celebrating Teachers Appreciation Week, May 3 through 9, 2020. Whereas teachers make all schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Allison Kerr, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim May 3 through 9, 2020, as Teachers Appreciation Week. I urge all citizens to observe this week by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers of our lives. Sign this 28th day of April. So thank you, teachers. The second one is in recognition of Arbor Day. If you haven't heard, Delray Oaks has become an official tree city, and I'm sure you'll hear a little bit more about that in reports. So the proclamation, the City of Delray Oaks City Council hereby celebrates Arbor Day 2020. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and the world, and trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas in our city, excuse me, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, and whereas in cooperation with the city, residents have planted over 100 oak trees in Delray Oaks this past year. Now, therefore, I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of the City of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Delray Oaks. I encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I encourage all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Sign this 28th day of April 2020, Allison Kerr, Mayor. Okay, now we'll move on to item number four, the consent agenda. As always, any member of the council and/or the public may pull any of these items. So anyone interested in pulling any of the consent agenda items? Any city council? Sorry, we're flipping through. Okay, anybody in the public?
Mayor, I have a comment that I'd like to make if allowed to. Item C4, please, not pulling it just for comment.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The item on consent tonight for C4 is quite an important and auspicious item. It not only represents the approval tonight of a master agreement by the City of Delray Oaks, and we will join cities throughout the peninsula, as well as Tamsie and the county, in signing that agreement ultimately to continue the way forward with a very exciting regional trail network, but it also represents a significant amount of research that's gone into the environmental review process. The city council is being asked to find adequate the final EIR for the Fortag project, as well as adopt the mitigation and monitoring plan. The current, the current cost of the mitigation measures, as we understand it, will be limited to maintenance of the trail once turned over to us, the cost of trash receptacles, and potentially of security lighting and police patrols to ensure it is safe. Those mitigation measures will be spelled out in more detail as we get a supplemental agreement specific to our trail segment, and that will be coming to the council in the future, at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll consider a motion to...
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. Thank you, it's, that's an exciting one. Number five, old business, we have none. Number six, we have new business. A is consider applications to fill one vacancy on the planning commission. So I do believe we have both folks here. First and foremost, thank you for offering your time and talents to this position and in service of your city. We would like to hear from each of you. Let's please begin with Michael Berger. Just a minute, just a minute. There we go. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you for having me. I'm a relatively new resident to Delray Oaks, moved here in November of 2018. We're also new to Monterey County, having moved here in late 2016, and we spent a good amount of time trying to figure out where to live, where we would like to live, and a lot of people said, "Come to Delray Oaks, check it out if you can even find a house here." And they were right, it's a fantastic place, we have great neighbors, I've made great friends, and my wife and I really love the, I'm looking out my window right now, because we really love the beauty of the neighborhood where we live, and I want to help preserve that, and I also want to help with the development of the Fort Ward project, as well as, we recently went through a, the process of going through the planning commission to get approval for a project, as well as going through the city and to help the city and going through plant check, the whole entire process, and I was really impressed with what I saw. A friendly bunch, it's an intimidating proposition, but everybody was so helpful and the process was so streamlined, I kind of felt I wanted to help people do this. And so with a little bit of my background, which is actually in car sales, I was involved heavily in designing the interiors, as well as some exterior schemes of cars, and that's helped me with what I think is a good guidance in helping with suggestions with exteriors of homes. I love architecture, I've helped develop homes in Orange County where we're from, worked with architects and people, and I'm a people person, and I, I just feel the want and need to be involved. Again, I've been in front of the planning commission and, you know, just had a great experience, and these are people that I want to help support and help support the neighborhood and anybody that wants to do a project, and help them through the process, and so that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go out to council to see if anyone has any questions or comments. Vice Mayor Clark?
No, I'd just like to thank, thank him for putting an application in, and it's always nice to have applications. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And welcome to Delray Oaks.
Councilperson Lindtow?
Likewise, I would like to thank him for submitting his application, and sounds very good, and thank you so much for supporting Delray Oaks.
Thank you.
Councilperson Getzel?
Again, thank you very much for your interest and support for the city, and looking forward to having you involved in the city, whether it's on the planning commission or in another position. Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Gagliotti?
Yeah, I also see, I mean, I thank you, Mike, for coming here. I was one of Mike's, what is it, references, and I've known him for a number of years. The, he's very detail-oriented, he builds cars, he actually has an O2 just like I have an O2, and, and the, the precision and the detail that he works on his cars is really kind of reflected in a lot of things that he's done, and just about everything is, if you go to his house, there are very, very, first of all, it's very nice and very clean and very, you know, very kind of well-kept, but he cares a lot about the details, and I have found, being on the planning commission for a number of years, that that is something that's extremely important, and especially in the future planning commission decisions that are gonna be coming down the pike, having that, kind of that, just that nature of digging into things, reading, finding, looking at things in detail, asking a lot of questions, educating themselves, I think is a very, very important part of being a planning commissioner, and Mike has shown that, that he has that, that nature and that skill. So thank you, Mike, for putting in your application.
Thank you.
Okay, and as usual, I have some questions, if you don't mind, Michael. What community service have you done previously?
A lot of, mainly volunteer, starting with college, I was part of a program with the sailing division of Orange Coast College where we taught underprivileged kids to sail and give them goals to aspire to and show them other things they can do to entertain themselves, things that are legal, for example. I've been involved with our local city fish fry when I was in Costa Mesa, involved with a lot of charities, including, well, with the line of work that I was in, we did a lot of fundraising, it is promotion, but we did Juvenile Diabetes Relief Funds, we did Children's Hospital of Orange County, Home Hospital, which is kind of an Orange County version of CHOP. Here, we have been involved, my, my business is in Pacific Grove, and I volunteer for Good Old Days and the Fourth of July BBQ and things of that sort, and also help with a car show that we put on, the classic car show we put on every year to help raise a little bit of money for the city. I'm also involved with the, with Laguna Seca Car Show, that happens once a month, and then Cars and Coffee over at the Chili's parking lot, and I'm pushing, and I have been pushing for the last several months to expand that into charity, because we have the opportunity there to help homeless with food, help children with toys during the holidays, and help different organizations locally, to, you know, in some cases, you can even look at helping women with clothing, and these are the things that I like to be involved with, because we have the resources if we just put ourselves together to do it. So my community service has been mostly charitable work.
Great, thank you. What do you think the single most important skill is for a planning commissioner to have? I'm sorry?
Listening.
All right, okay, thank you. Any, can we go out to the public? Do you know? Yes? Yes, all right. I want to see if there's any public comment or questions?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, are we gonna hear from the other applicant first? We have another applicant, don't we?
Yes, we do. I just was wondering, I don't see any public comments for him right now, so we're going to close public comments and we'll move on to the next applicant.
Oh, okay.
And so the next applicant is Denise Wood.
Hello.
Hi, Denise.
Hello. I live here up on Rosita Road, and I've been here for 12 years, and I've, yeah, done some work in front of the planning commission to get some stuff done at the house, and my work background is, for 15 years, I've been working for a landscape design build firm in Carmel, working mostly with residential houses, but also, we did the city hall there and the median strips, submit plans, do design, oversee the crew, and also supply, source all the supplies. And my public... And my public service, so I was involved with the Action Group, past president, a few years back, and spearheaded the planting at the city hall twice, and at the park, and all the events helped out with those, and my kids still, they help out with the Santa's Workshop, now and here and then. And so I think with my here, time here in the city and my social work, I, I think I'd make a good team on the planning commission. I've worked with clients, worked with agencies, got everyone compromising on the same page, and I think I would be a good, very good asset, so thank you.
Thanks, Denise. We'll do the same thing. Vice Mayor Clark?
Well, I'd like to recognize Denise, I have my name on her application, and she was a great president of the Delray Oaks Citizens' Action Group, and, and led a large group of people in beautifying city hall and the Old Town Hall. I've worked with her, I think she would make a great addition to the planning commission. She is detailed, and, and just like Michael Berger, you know, she's a good listener also, and I highly recommend her.
Thank you.
And thank you, Denise, for all your, all your labor of love in the city, because it's been a lot, and I think she's very deserving.
All right, councilperson Lynn Tao?
Yes, I've seen the work that Denise has done, both at city hall and at the Old Town Hall, and the city hall twice, as she mentioned, and she's done outstanding volunteer work in both of those areas. And as she mentioned, her children do help with us, with the Citizens' Action Group, and at the Christmas party, and they help entertain younger children and doing the crafts, and I, I think she would be a very good, also a very good member of the planning commission from her background, and the work she has done previously. And thank you for all your work, Kristin. Not Kristin, how about that? Thank you for all your work, Denise.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Councilperson Getzel?
I would like to thank you for applying and your interest, long-term, in the city, and as I said, whether we, whether you get put on the planning commission or not, greatly appreciate, and look forward to working with you in the future on other projects.
Okay.
All right, councilperson Gagliotti?
Yeah, I am absolutely near what Councilmember Getzel stated. This is what I, I don't believe I've ever met you, so I don't know, but I absolutely appreciate your interest, and you do sound like you're very qualified, and it sounds as though that you, you've got some public service knowledge, so that will be, I will consider that in my decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Denise, you answered my first question about community service, so you get a different one. What is your vision of what Delray Oaks should and could be in the future?
I think we need to keep the same feel of the city. I mean, we all love the friendliness of it and the close-knit community. Moving forward, maybe more utilizing the technology that we have out there, incorporating that in plans and thinking, you know, taking, keeping our community in mind.
Great, thank you. And then lastly, what do you think the single most important skill is for a planning commissioner to have?
Oh, definitely, well, I'm sorry, listening and its compromise, because you have to make it work for all sides.
Very true. All right, let's go out for any public comment? I see Gary Krieger. Yeah, let me. Mr. Krieger?
He's talking the nut.
Okay, just a minute.
There we go, that worked.
Thanks.
Well, I just wanted to, as a sitting member of the planning commission, I just want to say it's a real pleasure to see two high-qualified applicants, that's really nice, and this is my only other observation would be that since Alice Green has left, it's, we have somewhat of a testosterone overload on the planning commission, this is maybe something to consider, sorry, Michael, but two great candidates and people who are applying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other public comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised. All right, so we'll go back. So we vote on this, we don't do a voice vote, what we'll do is each of the council people will send a message to Kim via chat. Does everyone understand how to do that?
Yes.
Yes? All right. So we're just going to take a minute, and then Kim will tally it up. John, do you have the capability to do that?
I don't, I'm just calling in. I'll text it to Dino, Dino can go.
Okay. And Kim, let us know when you're ready?
I'm ready, anytime you guys want to send it, it's fine.
Okay. I have sent mine. Kristin?
I've sent mine.
Okay.
I sent mine.
I haven't, not familiar with this.
Okay.
Hold on. Jim will go help her.
I'll send her a chat, and she could just respond.
Okay.
Okay, I had chat, and all of a sudden it's gone to Zoom, I'm not familiar with this computer.
Okay, a minute.
I clicked on chat, and so here's chat, clicked there, and there's, okay, there, okay. Okay, okay. Okay, I talked mine in.
Okay, Kim?
I'm just waiting to see it come through. Did you hit enter, Pat?
I did, I did, is it coming through?
No, I'm not getting anything.
I hit enter.
There we go, now I got it.
Okay.
Okay, so we have four votes for Denise and one for Mike.
I just want to thank both of you for applying, and Michael, I hope we see your name again in the future. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Denise. I believe this is your second or third time applying?
Something like that.
Okay, well, welcome. Thanks, Michael. All right, we're going to move on to the next item of new business, which is to consider the first reading of ordinance 302, modifying chapter 17.59 of the Delray Oaks Municipal Code relating to signs as recommended by the planning commission. I'd like to turn this over to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is the first reading of the amended section 17.59 of the City of Delray Oaks Municipal Code. By way of context, as most of you know, great sections of our code are, are very old, and the city has lacked the means over time to, to update a lot of the code. The, the chapter on signs is one of those, and has lacked some clarity and lacked some contemporary references to case law and, and free speech, and has also been the source of fairly significant angst amongst some of our residents and staff, quite frankly, because of the ambiguity in, in the code. And so after the, the primary election, we found that it was probably time to, to update this chapter, and I'm, I'm very pleased to, to sort of call out our planning commission, and in particularly the Chair, Chair Donaldson, for really taking this issue up, doing the homework, looking at contemporary ordinances, surrounding municipal ordinances around us, as well as the character and nature of our city, and coming up with a, an excellent draft, and discussing it robustly with the public at a planning commission meeting. Our city attorney, Alex Lorca, did a lot of terrific spade work in, in framing some of the critical issues regarding free speech for the planning commission and for the public, and the result you see before you tonight is a product of those public hearings, the public input, numerous reviews by the city attorney, and, and we're, we're very pleased to present it for, for your consideration. There is one substantive change to the first reading document that I'd like to point out, and it is on page 12 of the revised ordinance in the council packet. It is chapter 17.59.170, permitted signs. On chapter, on that chapter, the ancillary signs description is stricken. So the ancillary signs description, where it says, "A sign of secondary nature, e.g. credit card signs not exceeding one square foot, such signs are not included in the maximum area, sign area allotment, planning commission approval is not required, a sign permit is not required," that is stricken, it's redundant with the description of an ancillary sign in a previous chapter, which will now govern, and allows for a greater square footage, a total of three square feet, as opposed to, to the one square foot. That is the only substantive change to the, the draft being proposed, pending, of course, council discussion and comment from the public, and any subsequent change that may, may occur. Mayor, I'd like to give the city attorney an opportunity to add, fill in any gaps I left there.
Could I interrupt just for a quick moment? So the ancillary information sign, the replacement is on page three, item 17.59.080 exception, and it says ancillary information signs maximum aggregate area of three square feet.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alex?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I think Dino pretty much hit, hit all the, all the points. I also would like to recognize Scott Donaldson for, for taking this up and the hard work of the planning commission, it was a, it was a long and thorough meeting, as well as the public that attended, some of whom made very good points that were incorporated into the draft you have before you here. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Alex. So let's go to the council. Vice Mayor Clark?
I do not have anything, I just wanted, again, to say thank you to the entire planning commission for redoing this, it was much needed, and I think it's a good job, and, you know, maybe in the future we can massage it even more, you know, but I think it's a great document right now.
All right, councilperson Lynn Tao?
Yes, this has been needed for a long, long time, and so, Scott, I thank you, Scott Donaldson, for taking the lead on this and all the work that you and the planning commission have done, as well as our city manager and our city attorney and the staff. I think it's good, and I really appreciate all you have done, and thank you so much.
All right, councilwoman Lynn Getzel?
I would just like to say thank you to everybody, the city staff, the city manager, the planning commission, Scott Donaldson, and the public who provided their input and their, their questions, their honest questions, to help shape some that hopefully we can all, and we have some guidelines that we all understand.
All right, councilperson Gagliotti?
Yeah, thank you again, I mean, I echo everything that the other members have said. I'm really impressed by the work that Scott put into this and the effort, he really owned this thing. I do have some kind of clarifying question. In the definitions, not all of the signs were described, we have descriptions and conditions, I'm just, first of all, I, kind of a broader, is, what was the necessity of having so many categories of signs? Because as I read some of these, I see a number of them could be, that could be collected. Specifically, I don't quite understand why there was a need for the differentiation between an awning sign, a canopy sign, an under-canopy sign, and really, and even for that matter, a wall sign. What was some of the justification there? If I can get an answer. Anyone?
Yeah, I'm looking at Alex, you want to take a swing at that?
Yeah, so councilmember Gagliotti, can you, can you point to the section where, or the page number?
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole meat of this document is in these tables, and I appreciate, I really, really appreciate that, I really appreciate that you guys went to the, went to that level. I mean, it's, it's so much easier to read tables, and if they're all broken out, than trying to kind of piece things out of. It's in, it's in the table, permitted signs, 17.59.170.
A lot of those, that is more of a, of a look and feel, rather than, you know, limitations, regulatory type thing, I think some of those were carryovers from the existing code, they were just put in this table format.
So is there an opportunity to kind of combine some of these? Like, I think anything to do with, that, you know, like, that's an awning and a canopy, I think it'd all just be in one block. We could have maybe a canopy, awning, I don't see, I don't see any need to have the three, three categories of signs, for that regard. So maybe I'd recommend that. What about wall signs? What is, what is, describes a wall sign, and what is the nature of a wall sign?
Usually that's something along the lines of painted on the side of a building, so it's not, it's not a canopy or awning, it's painted on the side of a building, is an example that comes to mind.
Okay, so then, I have maybe a more kind of broader question, is that, should we, we're not looking at signs, in other sign law, there's differentiation between private, public, and commercial, we're just basically looking, I'm asking this as a question, are we just looking at this as, as a sign ordinance for all signs, whether you are, it's a commercial sign, a public sign, or a private sign?
Yeah, the, the ordinance does cover all of those.
Because I could see where a wall sign on a commercial building, I feel, should be treated differently than, say, if somebody wants to paint something on their house, you know, and then I think that someone should be able to paint that on their house, but I think that if it's on a business, then that should be brought before the planning commission.
And that, if that was the council's pleasure, that's a distinction that could be made.
Okay. And then another thing on, on the freestanding signs and window signs, and then the distinction between a temporary window sign and a permanent window sign? Was there any, what was the thinking behind that? Why, why are we, why, why do we feel that any window sign needs any temporary or permanent distinction? Because they're, they're described exactly the same, the, the only difference is, is you can have one up for 45 days, and you, you, the other, you could have greater than 45 days, and neither requires a planning commission approval.
Yes, I think, I think that goes to the construction of the, of the type of signs, but again, that is something that if the council felt that they would like to merge into one, or, or have some sort of different type of regulation, that's, that's well within their discretion to do so.
Okay. All right, and freestanding signs and monument signs too, that's, that's one, that's a category that I, that it, I find could probably be compressed into, into one, in fact, one refers to the other. Then there was, what the heck was this one? Yeah, reader board signs. Is the, is the vision here that somebody could have a... Then there was, what the heck was this one? Yeah, reader board signs. Is the vision here that somebody could have an interchangeable lettered sign? So they would have something that they could put their daily meme on? And they, but they get it permitted once and it would sit in their yard? And then they have all the freedom to basically put anything they want on that sign? Is that the vision there?
I'm sorry, councilmember Gagliotti, can you repeat the question? I'm going to try to follow.
Yes, your thing. So a reader board sign, it looks as though you go and get it permitted. And of course, I don't think we have any purview over the content of the sign. But is, I just want to be explicit, is the vision there or the purpose of that sign? Somebody could have that sitting in their front yard. They could have a reader board sign. And any day, they could change the message on that. Is that true?
That is true under this ordinance. The limitation in a residential area would be, you know, the total size of the sign or signs.
Okay. All right. And then I was also thinking that we've taken George Jacksaw's ability to put the, any of the Delray Oak signs nailed into my tree. I'd actually like to offer then to build, what was it? I guess it maybe would be a reader board sign or at least maybe a monument sign in the Delray Oaks right of way there. And then we've got a place that we can kind of put signs in it. So that was just something, just a parting thought. And I think, I think once we have defined what the type of signs are, then I think one of my first actions will be to ask to have that put in my front yard there. And they can go ahead and use that. So I guess we maybe go out to the public and then come back for some kind of recommendations.
I have comments too. Are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So firstly, I would like to address the emotions related to signs, political signs in particular, but not exclusive. The reason we basically are doing this is because of the situations with the recent political signs and the signs two years ago. No legislation we affect is going to dampen the passion each of us feels for campaigns or issues. So I don't believe any ordinance will actually result in a decrease of passions. But I would like it to be clear for everyone from the get-go. So that said, so it's important for me that any ordinance move forward, number one, does not impose any additional restrictions for residents to freely express their opinions and their constitutional rights. Number two, for any potential violation, I would like to see a warning first that includes clear guidelines for remedying the issue. And number three, I want enforcement to be consistent for all activities throughout the city, whether it's businesses, residents, or events. I asked quite a few questions of the city manager and our attorney that I want to either review or ask them to help clarify so everyone understands. One of the first things is there were lots of different words used. And so I asked for clarity, is this a right of way? Is this an easement? Is this? And it is a right of way. Alex, could you please explain how the city can use that private property owner's parcel for the city?
When the city was laid out in the area subdivided, my sense is that a right of way, let's take a street, for example, many times extends beyond the physical street. And the city reserves that right of way. I'm not aware of anything that the city gave up or withheld with regard to that right of way. That is, I don't know that there's any prohibition currently of putting things in that right of way or allowing things in that right of way. So when homes were built and yards were extended into the right of way, my sense is that the city retains control of the right of way area.
Can you define control?
The city can regulate activities within that right of way.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, there was some concern that was shared by some residents about surveying work being done. Dino, can you explain how that is being handled?
Sure, Mayor. So as part of the discussion about the right of way and the distance to which the right of way extends beyond the edge of the roadway, and in fact, where at the edge of the roadway, whether it's the pavement or the curb edge, that measurement begins. The planning commissioner, the planning commission chair, I think the planning commission overall and the public had a fairly robust discussion about that matter. The, all the cities around us share the same prohibition on placing signs in the right of way. Where precisely that right of way is, is for our particular city, and it varies by city, how they were laid out. For about 85% of our residential streets, it's five feet from the edge of either the pavement or the curb. If there is no curb, it's the edge of the pavement. For the other 15% or so, and these are rough numbers based on what we know, in a few cases, the right of way can be shorter, four feet. And in other cases, it can extend up to nine feet. And as I understand it, that nine-foot right of way occurs in the end of the cul-de-sacs primarily. And so the city doesn't have a map that shows the precise right of way for each street in the city. And so in the discussion about how to best update the ordinance, the recommendation was made and is being made tonight to you that five feet from the edge of the pavement or the edge of the curb, if there is a curb, be used as the standard for establishing the public right of way for the purposes of the ordinance. In discussing this, Chair Donaldson spoke with Frank Lucido, who is a licensed surveyor and business owner in our city, about the potential for surveying our streets. And in the discussion, I pointed out to both Scott and Frank that the city doesn't have the resources to pay for a citywide survey. Nor do we have the staff to manage a GIS layer that would be the record of the citywide survey. Mr. Lucido was very gracious in offering to survey the city and build a GIS layer and maintain that GIS layer on his computer at his home for potential use by whoever it might be, either by the city, by the city engineer, by residents potentially. And there are any number of uses that it could be, that it can be used for, whether it be establishing where a fence might go, where the actual right of way boundary is, or assistance with a street project. That has unfolded in the last 10 days or so. And the city is engaged with Mr. Lucido to establish an indemnification agreement for his work in the public right of way. The city hasn't committed to procuring, accepting, or using the work product in any way. But one can certainly see where we might, depending on what that work product ultimately looks like and how it's offered. And so that's where we are currently with the survey.
Thank you. So the next one on my list is enforcement. There are two different means of enforcing. One is on page seven, item C, would allow access to private property and actual removal of the offending item. And then on page eight, under B, where a sign on a private property would be moved by the police to a safer location. I would love to see page eight, under B, be the preferred method. Tying that to a warning would be even better. Can, Dino or Alex, can you clarify the differences between those? I do believe one is, one that has been left over after 30 days. But if you could explain that difference, I'm just concerned about private property movement versus removal.
If I might, Mayor, indeed, you're correct. Section 120 is abandoned signs, those that have been left behind. Whereas in section 140, it's a health and safety issue. So for instance, if there was a sign blocking traffic on a fence and you couldn't see around the corner and the police department felt that that was in violation of some sort of traffic standard or presented a safety risk, they could summarily abate that.
So what I've been hearing is a lot of the reason we're doing the five foot and the right of way is for safety. So what I'm guessing is page eight, under B, where a sign on private, well, on private property would be moved by the police. So if it were in the right of way, what is the process?
Well, the process, I think, would be the same in this circumstance because it's a health and safety concern. So whether it was on private property or within the right of way, presented sort of a health and safety type issue, the police department could abate that nuisance essentially.
Abate or move it to a safer location? Page eight, under B, says it will be moved to a safer location on the property.
Yeah, so by abate, I guess I mean to remove the health and safety concern, whether that's moving it to a different spot or working with the homeowner or the business owner to find a different place for it.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
So what I'd like, I've asked Chief to give his take on this since it's essentially a police function. So Chief, can you expand on what Alex has said regarding the mayor's question?
Absolutely. Am I on?
You're on.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council, city manager, and citizens. When it comes to signs, as I said before at a previous city council meeting, sign enforcement is one of our lowest priorities just because that's how the code is actually written, our municipal code. Our philosophy is, when we can, we will, Madam Mayor, we will always give a warning first. We will always try and move a sign.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I did miss that.
We will always try, we will always try to give a warning first. We will always try to, as this code puts forth, take the sign, place it in a proper and legal or safe location, depending on what the issue is. However, it's not a perfect world. We have 16, 17 officers, including our reserves, at any given time, who may make a discretion call whether they can't get a hold of a property owner and they take the sign as this is allowed because it's a health and safety hazard, or whether they move it to another place. That's going to be the call of the officers. However, the philosophy that we'll promote throughout the department is always give a warning, always try and contact the homeowner, always try and resolve the situation with the lowest level of enforcement. We do that with cars that are parked illegally. We try and walk up to the door and knock on the door before we write them a ticket. If we can run the license plate and find out that it's a resident, we'd like to contact that resident first. But of course, sometimes the plates come back to somebody from Seaside or Salinas or out of another city and we have no means of contacting them. So in that case, if it's a hazard or if it's a citable offense that needs to be cited and not a warning because it's egregious, then we'll put a citation on there. And I think we'll just carry over the same philosophy for signs. We don't want to be mixed up in political signs. We don't want to be mixed up in any signs. But we'll always try and be fair and balanced. And my philosophy, even with traffic tickets here in the city, education, education, warning, warning. What are we trying to accomplish is what I tell my officers. And that's where we'll be at with this.
Great, thank you. I just want to make sure that we don't have a repeat of what happened two years ago and surprise our residents. So if we could do warnings first, that would be my preference. I also asked for clarification on the six-foot aggregate for handheld signs, as well as the difference between handheld and personally attended signs. I was, it makes total sense. Each person, each individual has the right to have a six-foot sign and/or stand next to a significantly larger personally attended sign. And those can be used, however, is that correct? Am I reading that correct, Alex?
That's correct, that's correct, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And then my last one is on page 10. Temporary signs cannot be used for more than 45 days. Because this ordinance already contains restrictions in regards to a time, event, or purpose, I don't think it is up to us to restrict the reuse or non-use of signs. The one that comes to mind is garage sale signs, right? Are we saying that they have to get new ones every year? I would like to see this sentence struck. Alex, do you know any issues with that?
Mayor, can you help me? Which sentence specifically are you talking about?
Page 10. And it says temporary signs cannot be used for more than 45 days.
So Mayor, those signs could be reused after the 45 days.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. So this is not stating that a sign cannot be reused in the case of the next event.
That's right.
Okay, great. And that's all I had. Kristin?
I just wanted to kind of comment on a comment that you made in regards to not having what we had the last time with political signs. And I think, I know that the sign problem was complaint-driven by residents. And the residents who complained know who they are. And I think that when you get so many complaints by residents, city staff has to respond. I've lived here for 25 years now and there's never been a problem with any signs. And I don't think anybody ever, I don't, there was no complaints. There's been very few signs also. But when city staff, and I guess Dino can maybe comment on this too, but I think that when they get so many complaints by citizens, they have to respond. So it was, it was because of the complaints that all these problems happened. So hopefully we'll have residents that don't complain.
Well, you know, I am fine with residents complaining if they see a safe and healthy, excuse me.
Oh, sure.
Healthy issue. But I think if we are a little more gentle, especially in our first approach, it won't create quite as much chaos for the residents. I also think these conversations, talking, you know, about the five feet and all of that might help that. But there is a lot of emotion. And so having a softer touch at the beginning, especially for something so emotional, is my preference, rather than going in and surprising people by removing their signs. That's my point.
If I may, Mayor, just provide some context here from the staff perspective. You know, there was plenty of emotion about the signs from two years ago. And there were plenty of complaints. And it got to the point where dealing with signs in the right of way, frankly, was a significant time requirement on your police department. And so we'll always make those cost-benefit decisions for the benefit of the city. Well, and what I mean by that specifically is if it's going to take our officers on duty, hours of time to engage with the soft touch, which is absolutely preferred, hours of time, uh, to engage with the soft touch, which is absolutely preferred in order to, to obtain compliance with a, in a, in a, in a very heated, um, environment, we, we will take that into account, and we will do our best to communicate with, with all of you on council and with the public. And that's, you know, certainly that, that was a very unique setting. And, and I, uh, I know that, uh, I've learned from it, uh, the Chiefs learned from it. I think the residents have learned from it. So, uh, I, I think there's a, um, I, I feel like we are much better equipped to, to handle this going forward. And frankly, I think the, uh, the last go-around with the, um, the most recent primary election is a case in point where, um, where there were signs that were absolutely zeroed in on and hammered. I mean, we got hammered at City Hall on one sign in particular. It could not be cited frequently enough. It could not be removed quickly enough. And we were taken to task for not being much more heavy-handed, even though we cited within hours. So, um, so I think there, you know, there's, this is always going to be delicate. It is emotional. I absolutely acknowledge that. And, and we'll always do our, do our best. And I'm confident we'll do, uh, we certainly will do better than we did two years ago. And, uh, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Yes, it was, it was a painful lesson for everybody, I think. Um, so, uh, I'd like to go out for public comment. Anyone have a question or comment that they'd like to talk about the sign ordinance? Uh, I see Kim Shirley.
Hi, everyone. Uh, I just want to thank again the Planning Commission for the work that they've done on this sign ordinance. Um, I do have a question now that the ancillary, uh, sign definition, definition was stricken. I'm wondering how you would define, um, what's the difference between an informational purpose of a sign and an ideological purpose of a sign? You know, I see you smiling.
Alex, over to you, sir.
Uh, maybe, maybe I'll say the reason why I'm asking is clearly an ancillary sign is viewed as permanent versus, um, an ideological sign is viewed as temporary.
So the, the difference between permanent and temporary, um, is, is just the construction of the sign. And so the examples in the new ordinance are informational being, uh, you know, beware of dogs, security signs, things like that. Whereas, uh, non-informational signs would be more maybe a political message or, or, uh, a non-commercial, anything essentially that's not a commercial message. Does that?
Uh, well, uh, not exactly, I guess. It sounds like informationally, you said it's in how it's built initially.
Now, that's the distinction between temporary and permanent is the construction of the sign.
So it sounds like you can have a temporary sign that's very durable, that can last, and you can also have an ancillary sign that is also very durable and can last.
That's right. It could be permanent or temporary ancillary sign.
Right, so, so, and what I'm saying is if it's temporary, but yet durable and is to remain up, um, you know, I, I am trying to clarify that, the, the difference.
Right, so, so I, I don't know that, that as much as, as, as the, the legislature or attorneys try and regulate all human conduct, I, I don't know that we can here. So we have to, you know, make distinctions sometimes arbitrarily, 45 days. I think in that situation, it would come down to how is that sign mounted? You know, if it's, if it's a garage, if, if George Jackshaw has his garage, he'll sign up and it's, uh, you know, taped up. I think that's probably going to be considered a temporary sign. Whereas if, if a business has a, a, a sign up that's made of, you know, wood and, and glued and screwed, that would be more of a permanent sign. And that, so it's really the construction is, is the distinction between the, the two types. So you could have an ancillary sign that was, was temporary, or you could have one that was, was permanent. I think both are, are possible.
So, but it sounds like the ordinance doesn't clearly define then what that construction is. Because I could have something that is an informational sign, but it is constructed in a, in the same way that a political sign would be. And so does that make it all of a sudden temporary?
That would make it a temporary. The construction would, the construction and the mounting of the sign would dictate whether it was a temporary sign or a permanent sign.
And, and who makes that decision? Because I didn't see that laid out in the ordinance.
Yeah, so there, there's.
Point out to me where it is.
Sure, the, in the definitions, there's a definition for temporary signs that, that talks about, um, how they're mounted and the construction materials. And with regard to the question of how that's determined, yes, there is some discretion. Uh, there is some discretion there. I don't know that the ordinance can cover all, all possibilities, but, uh, city staff would have the discretion, uh, to, to determine that. And I'm confident, as, as Dino mentioned, that, uh, the city's first step would be to, to work with the homeowner or the business owner, whoever it may be, uh, to discuss that.
So I have to say, I do worry about that discretion being left up to, um, city. And also, I, um, I feel that it, obviously, if you have two signs that are constructed the same way, and one is okay, and, you know, one's temporary, maybe for 45 days, but one wants to be left up. Um, it seems like if I, if you have to go through a review process for the one you want to leave up, it seems as though that then I, now I have the Planning Commission or the city determining content. And that seems like that, that wouldn't be, um, seems like the Supreme Court certainly wouldn't support that.
I don't know that the city would determine, make a determination based on content. It would look at the construction of the material, the construction of the sign.
Well, let me give you an example. So let's say I have a no-road DRO sign, right? And that, and let's say I want to have that sign up for six months, right? That's constructed, as you're saying, like a temporary sign. But you're saying, since I want to leave it up for an extended period of time, I would need to get a permit.
Uh, unless it was exempt, uh, unless it was an exempt sign, yes.
So would that be an exempt sign, the no-road DRO sign? Would that be considered an ancillary informational sign?
I don't think so. If you look at the definition, uh, ancillary signs are things like, um, let me get to the definitions here real quick.
Well, in ancillary, it says informational purposes.
Right, so I, I don't know that that would be an informational sign.
I think.
It'd be, it would be more of a political sign.
Well, it's, you know, not wanting a road in your city is not necessarily political. I mean, you can make it political, but I think overtly, it's just stating what you believe.
Kim, if I may, if I, if I can jump in, Alex, for just a minute.
Please.
You know, this, this, this is a great issue. And, and, um, the council really needs to decide based on public input where this line is and what this description looks like. Because it's, it's, um, the potential exists for us to have no regulation on these signs. And if that's the case, if that's the will of the council, then we just have to be ready for whatever comes, right? Today, we want a no-road DRO sign, and we're okay with that. You know, tomorrow, we have, you know, a swastika in somebody's front yard, and we find it abhorrent. But the same rule that allows one allows the other. So, um, so I, I would just caution not to solve for your favorite sign at the moment, but solve for a standard that you want to live with in the community. It's a great topic, and I, I, you know, I just want to, want to lay that out there for, for you and the council.
And, and through the mayor, if I might, you know, that, that absolutely, the, the city at some point is going to have to exercise discretion, but it is well within the council's discretion. If they want to add more detail to this and, and, and drill really deep on this, then, then that's something that's perfectly within the, the purview of the council to do.
Okay. One more comment?
But, but, Kim, we have to move on.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Any other public comment? Uh, I see Ken Rutherford.
Hi, yes. I also wanted to thank, uh, the Planning Commission for the work that they've done on this, on the work on this. I was hoping, um, that it would be simpler and shorter and cleaner and easier for residents to just pick up the ordinance and decide whether they can put the sign up and where they could put it. And I'm an attorney, and frankly, I would have some of the same questions that many of us are having with respect to the signs. And that's probably not what we as a city want with respect to, uh, our residents needing to know. What if I want to put, "Support our troops" sign up while there's a war going on? And it's plastic. Shouldn't I be allowed to keep that up while the war's going on to show my support of the troops? That's the kind of sign that I think, uh, we would want. Of course, it applies to all signs. And I know Dino said, "Well, you can, uh, be particular and have a swastika if you allow that." But that's right, because that's freedom of speech, and we have to allow that type of speech as well. But I think that the freedom of speech needs to be recognized, and we need to make it as simple for residents as possible. And I, I hope the council will consider that. I also, uh, in looking at the enforcement and remedy section, I had sent, I think, all of you an email, and the Planning Commission an email. I'm hoping that the enforcement and the remedy section can be clearer for residents as well. I would like to see something included directly in the sign ordinance that explains to residents what the enforcement and what the penalty is going to be, so they'll know. And I would prefer that it just be a simple administrative citation, which is what I've been told, uh, by city staff and also by the chief, is what they prefer, but they want to have the other options available to them. I think residents would like to know, "Look, here's the signed ordinance. I'm trying to comply with it. If I violate it, I'm going to be subject to an administrative citation." I know that Dino and the chief are not always be in our city. They're going to move on, or we're going to pass away in 20, 40, 50, 60 years down the road. This may still be here. So we need to be looking beyond the goodwill of the current staff and recognize that this needs to be long-lasting. So I would ask that it be specific with respect to the enforcement and the remedy that applies. And I guess the one last thing I have is the issue of right-of-way. And maybe, Alex, you can address this again. I had my property surveyed when I moved in here on Villa Verde and was told that the actual property line extends back from the road, and it is not a right-of-way, but it's actually city property. Can you clarify that difference between right-of-way easement and actually property, and actual property line?
Well, the, the right-of-way is city-owned property. And if, yeah, I, I'm just not, I'm, I'm not understanding the question. The, a right-of-way is city-owned property that, and, and if it's a right-of-way, it, it's public access is allowed, for instance, like a street. Can you, can you help clarify your question, I think? I'm, I'm not quite understanding the distinction you're looking for. He's still muted, I think.
Yeah, I got it there here, yes. I think you said earlier that it was a right-of-way, and if the city did not give up any control or still has the right to use the property. There's a difference between right-of-way, which is not property ownership, correct? I mean, you'd agree with that. A right-of-way gives somebody the right to, it's, it's an easement, in essence.
Exactly.
So there's a distinction between property line and right-of-way. So I, when you're talking about, is the sign going to be placed on a right-of-way, the city might have a right-of-way through my property that's different from the actual property owned by the city.
That's correct.
But can I, can I ask, can I, can I ask kind of a clarifying question on that? I, I, I think, I think that the point of view of right-of-way, I think, is getting clouded here. There, it's actually, it's city-owned property, and the residents have the right to go to, uh, to traverse it. So the right-of-way is to the city. Right, exactly. And, and I, and I think, I think that there's kind of an understanding, from what I'm gathering from Mr. Rutherford, that he, he says, or he, he believes that, that it is private property. It's, it's our property with, uh, within our property line, and that the city has the right-of-way to enter into it, and it's the other way around.
No, that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm basically saying that if my property line starts nine feet back from the curb, and there's going to be a survey, and it's now, it's going to say it's five feet back from the curb, am I going to be then given the city property? So, I mean, I, I certainly understand the difference between the right-of-way and who has the right-of-way. I guess, I guess I'm, uh, you're saying that it's on the city right-of-way when it's actually on city property?
The, the right-of-way, the, as I understand it, as far as the, the, the issue, and, and Dino can probably speak better than I can, I mean, is that the, the city owns the, the street to include some right-of-way on either side of the street, and the citizens have the right to use that right-of-way. So when I say the city owns the right-of-way, I mean, this, the city owns property, and it's the, the public and, that has the right to use a portion of that, whether they be traveling on the street or if their front yard is within the city's right-of-way. The city-owned property, I should say.
Okay, so I guess then, even if the, even if the right-of-way is nine feet, if you're saying that the use of the signs is five feet back, it's okay that it goes further back than that. I can still put the sign five feet from the curb. I don't have to go nine feet back and then five feet, like they were discussing.
Five feet is, is a uniform minimum distance from the curb, as written currently. Again, a provision that is, uh, at the discretion of the council, whether or not, uh, they want to adjust that. But that was a recommendation of the Planning Commission, and therefore found its way into the, to the ordinance you have before you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion. I certainly understand it better now. But with, with respect to the plastic signs, for example, of "We support our troops", where would that fall? As a resident that may want to put a sign like that up, or no-road DRO, where would that sign fall in this ordinance?
It, what do you, a, a plastic sign that's mounted just sort of temporarily, temporarily in the front yard or more permanently?
Well, it's, let's say it's stuck with two metal poles with a plastic sign in the middle, much like a, a, a political sign, but I'm going to leave it in there six months.
Yeah, so to my mind, that's a, that's a temporary sign based on construction and installation.
Okay, but now in the, with the construction, it doesn't talk about plastic, temporary.
Let me, let me, let me go to the definition here. So the temporary signs, uh, with or without wallboard, poster board, or other light materials, to my mind, that would be sort of a light plastic, like, like the political signs that you see frequently. And mounted in a non-permanent manner, to my mind, that would be the spikes that most of those go into the ground. Again, I'm not, I'm not your enforcement official, but I'm just pointing out sort of to, to perhaps what a, what a, what a layperson reading the ordinance would interpret it as.
Ken, we need to, uh, move on. Thank you. Um, um, I'd like to go to Gary Krieger. He just disappeared. Hang on.
I think he's muted.
I got it. There he is. His hand went down.
Thanks, guys. Very quickly, just, uh, could you clarify a little bit about the 45-day period? When does it start? How, how are we going to track that? I mean, just, just to get some, some, some idea of what, um, what exactly it is, we're going to be, you know, how that works? Is, uh, I mean, I can see a lot of questions, but I don't want to make it a big drawn-out thing. Have we, have we thought about that a little bit, just how we actually implement that?
Yeah, I think, uh, let me take a stab at that, if I may, Mayor. So Gary, it's a great question. I think what, what we're, certainly what we're thinking in, at, at the staff level and, um, is that there is generally some triggering event for a, a temporary sign to go up. In the case of a "Support our troops", it might be the deployment of a, of a, of a son or daughter from a community, or maybe a, an operation that, that is going on of some kind. In the case of no-road DRO, it may be the, uh, the, the percolating up of, of, of the desire to submit for a general plan amendment. There's generally some, uh, coalescence that drives signs going out. And, and I think from the time they go out, uh, plus or minus, I mean, we're not, nobody's taking a, a calendar out to, to keep track. But, uh, and again, we, we generally code-enforce, unless it's a health and safety issue observed by us, we generally enforce on complaints, right? So we're usually responsive and reactive, uh, rather than out searching town for code violations. And so. And so, from the time that sign goes up, generally around some triggering event, 45 days later is the, certainly how staff is looking at this language in the code. One of my concerns, one of our concerns, we discussed this, is, you know, you can game any system, right? I mean, you can go out, you can pull a sign out, put it in your garage for 24 hours, come back out, stick it in your lawn, and hey, it was up for 45 days, and then down, now it's back up. You know, how would we address that issue? I don't know. I would certainly not think that is in the spirit of the code. So I hope that gives you some framework.
Okay. I'd like to move on to Karen Harris. Karen? I see Canadian geese.
She's unmuting, but it's not... It's not unmuting.
Have you got it, Kim?
It's not unmuting. Every time I hit it, it doesn't.
All right, let me try.
Hang on. There it goes. Hi, Karen, you're on.
Hi, Mayor Kerr, city council people, and everybody, citizens. I am so grateful for the Planning Commission for putting this together, and this is very thoughtful. A lot of work went into it. There are some things I just wanted to ask about and also to clarify. Number one, the sustainable Delray Oaks, which I'm a co-chair, is supportive of single-use plastic signs and where they're available. We don't want to have any candidate feel like they have to have a single-use plastic sign, if it's going to be too expensive and they can't afford it. So I think that should be an option and something that we encourage. Secondly, I was wondering about plaques. I don't know if that's covered in the ordinance, like a commemorative tree or bench plaque, and plant labels that are informational. And so that goes back to the sign mounting materials that Alex was talking about. Like, are they temporary or incineratory, informational? So it would be really good to have some kind of guidance, so that we want to know if we should go in and get a permit or not. We want to be in compliance and not have any issues, you know? And the other thing is, flags. People hang flags for a lot of different causes, and usually they're not a problem, but I just want to know if those are covered.
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, I'm just thumbing through to the section, I believe, where flags are mentioned. So if you look at page 15, "Flags of any governmental entity are permitted. A sign permit is not required. Flags announcing commercial or business identity must receive Planning Commission approval and a sign permit." That's on page 15.
What about residential?
So as I read this, if it's not listed, if the entry above that signs in general, unless by virtue of the square footage it was exempt, you would have to get Planning Commission approval.
When would it be exempt? I'm sorry.
Hang on, let me just get to exempt signs here.
I know that there's car sales places that have these flags, you know, that are sticking up, or people have flags for welcome home, or, I mean, there's other kind of flags besides the American flag. But there's other flags that might be...
So flags aren't under, residential flags aren't under the exempt section, so that's something that if council felt they wanted to include, they could certainly insert it into the permitted sign entry for flags.
So if I was to say "Happy Easter," I would need to get a permit?
So Karen, let me jump in here, Alex. So my read on flags is, if you're putting a US flag up, state-of-California flag up, any governmental organization, fly your DRO flag, you're okay. If there is a, in the second case there, any kind of commercial or business-type use of flags, whether it be down at Stone Creek Village, or something posted by the car wash, or something like that, would require application for a sign permit and Planning Commission approval. And certainly would be something, well, that would require permit and Planning Commission approval. Now, if you, you know, as a practical matter, if you put your 49ers flag up in front of your house, or your, you know, whatever it might be.
Warriors' flag.
What's that?
Warriors.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I, you know, again, we could write that into the code if there's a sense that it's needed. I'm not sure that it is, but it's up to the council if they want to...
They don't know how deep in the weeds we want to go.
Exactly. Well, and I think, if I might, through the mayor, page four, "Temporary Private Party Signs on Private Property," my sense is that a flag would qualify for that exemption. But I'm with you on the warrior's flag.
Thanks, Karen.
Good. So, great. So we could put, like, plant labels for educational purposes? Would that be appropriate without a permit?
Yes.
Yes.
Commemorative signs, like, "This is dedicated to this or that," like on a bench, or something?
This is one where I think can use a little bit of discussion, because it's one thing, I think, if we're talking about putting something in your own yard, right? If you want to identify your plants or identify a bench or something like that, that's one thing. I think if it's going to be done on public property, the Butterfly Garden's a perfect example of where we might want to put signage about what plants are there, or why it's there. That, frankly, I'm not sure which, Alex, if you can help me, I'm not sure where it falls out in the, specifically in the ordinance. But I would certainly think it would require city review on city property.
Yeah, if placed on city property would require approval by the city.
Let me unmute you.
Oh, am I?
Karen, Karen.
I got it.
Thank you. I was just wondering, like, if there's a size limit? I mean, if it could just be a small sign that dedicates, "All these plants were donated by Mr. Maury in his garden center." You know, that's really nice. It might be just a little tiny thing. I don't know if that would be considered a temporary or incineratory, as informational. It's not, you know, advertising.
If I might, through the mayor, "An exempt sign is a government sign, signs on city property for city civic events, services, and direction," I think would fall under that. But the approval would have to come from the city, but not necessarily go get a signed permit or Planning Commission approval.
So if you don't go through the Planning Commission, you don't get a permit, how do you get approval?
That would be just at City Hall. Because even the city, if the city's going to put up a sign, technically, the city's got to go through, and it's not exempted, the city actually has to go through the Planning Commission in itself. So in that case, there's a prohibition on signs placed on city property without city approval, and then the government signs exemption on page three, I think, would apply to the situation you're talking about.
So Dino would be the person that we would ask?
City Hall, yes.
Yeah. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, and I frankly don't want to be in the business of approving those signs. And so what I would do is, I mean, depending on what we're talking about, unless it is the most innocuous thing ever, I would likely take advantage of the process that we established with the Planning Commission, to take the matter before the Planning Commission and get them to review it, discuss it, have an approval. And I think we've talked in the past of minimizing cost to the public for doing that, so we look at taking that on behalf of the city, but with material and input as to what exactly is being proposed, received from whoever's going to build the sign, I suppose. Because I think what we want to do is, again, somebody, Ken said it earlier, you know, you're not, we're all going to roll over at some point and move on. We want a process that is solid, clear, transparent, and I think your Planning Commission is very well-qualified and suited, as all of your peers, to make the determination, particularly as it comes to what may border on art, right? Because it's hopefully going to be something beautiful to look at. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. All right, any other public comments? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comments and bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor Clark?
Any thoughts? I don't know what to say. There's a lot of, I'm not sure why this was brought before the Planning Commission, you know, for several months, that some of these questions weren't asked at that time. And here we are, and what do we want to do? You know, there's a spirit in Delray Oaks that I think we have a good thing going, and I think a lot of this is a guidance for city staff, and I haven't seen too much in the way of abusing signs or flags, or, and in Karen's case, I think that, you know, little signs for plants and stuff like that, I don't see, like, that's a problem. I don't see that it needs to be, you know, written in here. But I don't want city staff to go crazy with all these, if everybody's going to come down with all these little questions, you know, then, you know, maybe you should go back before the Planning Commission, but I'd rather see it go through tonight. That's it.
Kristin, can you please repeat your last sentence? We lost you there.
Oh, sorry. No, I just said that if it needs to, if you really think it needs to go back to the Planning Commission for more review and public comment, because we had a lot of public comment tonight, so be it. But I'd like to see it go through tonight.
Okay. Councilperson Lynn Tell?
Yes, I think some of these detailed questions, especially in regards, like, to the Butterfly Garden, I think there needs to be a separate ordinance, or agreement, or whatever, when citizens, residents of Delray Oaks are utilizing city property. And I think that's a whole different issue, rather than covering these minute details in the sign ordinance. And I think there is, maybe there isn't, but there should be the spirit of abiding by the rules and regulations, just as we have with the virus. We, it's up to us to abide by the rules and regulations for our own safety and for the safety of others. And I think that that should apply to the city in general, the spirit of abiding by the rules and getting into these finite details. I think that should be covered. Like I say, when citizens are using city property, that should be a whole separate issue, should not be something covered in the ordinance, the sign ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilperson Getzel?
I agree with Vice Mayor Clark. I'm a little concerned that, well, you know, we were not, or I was not, at the Planning Commission, so I don't know if these concerns were previously brought up to the Planning Commission, and they took them into consideration and did an excellent job of what we have here, although I do agree with Councilmember Gagliotti that some of the things, some of the definitions can be combined, and it made it a little shorter, but, you know, it's something that can be looked at in the future. And like I said, I don't know if these same concerns were brought up previously to the Planning Commission, and this is, they took those into considerations, and this is the product they gave us. I'm hoping that these issues had been brought to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did take these into considerations. So, and as far as the matter for signage on projects that are done on city property by a private entity, for the pleasure of all the citizens and visitors, that'd be, I think, a simple solution to that is to do a one-time permitting process through the Planning Commission, giving a, setting some basic ground rules with the Planning Commissions for those types of products. For, okay, so, you know, you can put in a plant, and the signs for the plants are going to be, you know, six inches by 10 inches, or whatever, and, you know, wood and on wood stakes, or whatever, but setting a standard, and, but that's, I think that could be a one-time process to be used for multiple projects, and does not have to be as part of the sign ordinance, per se. It can be addressed, using the sign ordinance as guidance, but giving them a, I don't want to say a blanket permit, but giving them some standards for multiple projects. And as far as tonight, and this, I think we just need to move forward. We can, I've said it before, and I'll say it probably many times in the future, we can what-if something to death and get nothing done. And we have an 80% solution, and down the road, if we decide that this solution is, needs to be tweaked, we tweak it. But let's get with, let's just get with it.
Thanks. Councilman Gagliotti?
Yeah, so I really appreciated Councilmember Getzel's comments, and also Councilmember Clark's comments. As I look at this, this is an ordinance for signs, and we just basically start with signs. And I think that the slicing and dicing needs to be a little differently. I would say, kind of pinning off of Councilman Getzel's kind of analogy on the 80%, so I think we're kind of closer to 60% on this, and that is, I think, how we should probably do this is, first and foremost, we should be breaking out signs, types of signs, by whether or not they are on public property and commercial, and that should go through a discretionary process that goes to the Planning Commission, because that's where, that gives the city the opportunity to kind of put some regulation and some controls and kind of frame that in. And so I think the discretionary process and this whole block of permitted signs really should be focused on, that should be the discretionary process part of this. That's what goes before the Planning Commission. That's where they get to deliberate over it. That's actually where the cost, I think that, you know, the public and private things can bear the cost, or at least certainly the, not public and private, but the commercial can bear some of the cost in that. And then, and then there should be a section of private. I kind of think that that's how this should be broken out. And private would be, it's everything that we just heard tonight. It's Kim's sign. I mean, I don't think that there should be a distinction between 45 days or temporary and permanent based on construction. I think that if Kim wants to put a, you know, "No Road Delray Oaks," or, you know, "No Road in Delray Oaks" sign in front of her house for six months, she has every right to do that. And we really have no purview over that, and she should be able to do that, regardless of what the construction is. So I don't see any, I don't see the cleave coming down on construction. is. So I don't see any, I don't see the cleave coming down on construction and temporary and permanent. I see private, public, and commercial. That's kind of how I see the differentiation within signs. And I think that that just kind of, it puts it back on to, you know, where I think the responsibility lies, is the best judgment of the resident, you know. Dino's example of a swatch that you can putting up, you know, in someone's yard, sure, they could do it. The residents may have something to say about that, the residents will probably take care of that, and they'll have that communication. So I do think that that should be in the discretion of the residents. It's their private property, and they should be able to convey any message that they, you know, that they feel. That is protected speech. So that, just the structure of the ordinance, I think, should be broken out, public and commercial with a discretionary process through the planning commission, and then basically private. And overwhelmingly, 70, 80% of all the conditions that are described in there for private should be exempt. You should just be able to do it. And there may be some examples where there might be kind of a ministerial process, and that might be maybe that reader board, or the barber, you know, the barber pole, you know, something like that. If somebody was going to have that up there, then maybe they should go get a permit on that, just so we know where all those things are. I don't know. But I could see where there may be some need for, or maybe those flags, I don't know. But give the city at least some control over something that may be, I don't know, a little more impactful. And make that a ministerial process, just across the board. They go down, they pay their fee, whatever it is, $5, $10, they show a picture of it, and they put in an application, and they walk out and they can put their sign up. Or they could do even after the fact. I don't know. So that's something that I would like to see, is a different architecture, a different structure of the document, a different structure of the ordinance. And then, just going through all of these, I want to see a collapsing of so many of these categories. You know, monument signs and freestanding signs, anything to do with awnings or flags, I think that, you know, to Karen's point, you know, that, well, if it's a private, on private land, I think you should be able to do whatever you want to do. But if it's not, then that, to me, would fit underneath something that would be kind of under that, like an awning sign, or, what do we have here, some of these other things? I don't think there should be any distinction between a window sign, unless it's a commercial, you know, maybe that should be broken out in the commercials. Those are really kind of my points. I think the structure of the ordinance, make it, break it out into public and commercial with a discretionary process, private nearly all should be exempt, with a few ministerial cases, and then collapse a lot of these sign categories. And I don't think there should be any distinction between temporary and permanent. That's it.
My understanding is that this is primarily public property and commercial signs. I mean, we have no, by law, have really no authority over signs on private property unless they are considered a health and safety hazard. Is that correct, Alex?
Mm.
Hang on.
So case law does uphold a maximum area of limits on private property, the test being, you know, you can infringe on the speaker's right to speak. And so if you allow a maximum that allows the speaker to communicate their message, that indeed is permissible.
Well, we just heard in public comment, through the mayor, I'm sorry, we just heard in public comment of three examples where they are asking, how do I get to, how do I put the sign that I want in my yard? Do I need to go through, do I need to go through the 45-day process? And the answer was, in there, was, well, the council has the discretion to kind of make that call right now. So it sounds as though the sign ordinance encompasses private, public, and commercial, and treats it all as things.
So there's definitely differences between commercial and non-commercial. And then with regard to city-owned property, yes, that's different. There's just a prohibition of private party signs on city property.
John, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
I would characterize this more as primarily focused on commercial and private signs. The portion about public signs, signs in the public right of way is fairly clear, and it's very, very constrained, very limited, as outlined in the table that talks about direction finding signs, safety signs, so on and so forth. So this really is focused, this chapter is focused on what does the city want to do to regulate signs in the residential districts, private property primarily, and the commercial districts, businesses primarily? And that's the way it's broken down. And I think the two primary limitations that I see in this version, and again, subject to change, on private property relates to total area, and then depending on construction, the amount of time. And again, we've, and I know Scott Donaldson is on the call here, and he may, Mayor, you may wish to allow him to opine. You know, we did a lot of, we did a lot of work not to reinvent the wheel. So this is not made from whole cloth. This is, you know, best practices from Monterey, which did a recent update, best practices from Seaside and Carmel, case law from Alex's perspective. And so that's what you've got before you. Certainly we can take it back to planning commission, certainly we can take modifications from council, from the dais, and move forward with the first reading tonight. It is at the pleasure of the council, but I wanted to frame that a little bit for, based on what I heard from you, John.
Can I, to the mayor, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
So then, we could then just strike the difference between temporary and permanent, and then Kim could have her no DRO sign up in any construction that she wants. Would that then suffice? That being your guys' understanding, you, either Alex or Dino?
You bet. If you want signs, absolutely. That's, if the council wants to go with that, we can go with that.
That sounds like that would solve Ken's issue, Kim's issue, and my issue.
Can you please clarify that one more time?
So if we strike the distinction between a temporary and a permanent sign, because it's, and the difference seems to be just construction, then I could have a, you know, a campaign sign up, or I could have a no road DRO sign, or I could have something a little more permanent, you know, I could buy something online that expresses something my views, and I can put it in my yard, and there is no time limit on it, and no one is, there's no difference in the construction.
That's what you want.
And you're talking about same kind of things, political signs?
That's right. We cannot actually have any, it would be content neutral. We would have to maintain content neutral.
So we could have a political sign up all year long?
That's right.
Absolutely. Just like Kim said, to someone, it's a statement, but to another person, it might be political.
I have a question. What do the other cities have as far as election signs? What is their?
Yeah, they don't, you can't characterize them as election signs, even though we all know we're talking about an election sign when you call it a temporary sign, because of the free speech issue. So all the sign, all of the jurisdictions that we looked at had a limitation on the timeframe that a temporary sign could be posted. Did that answer your question, Louise?
Yes, thank you.
Alex has his hand up.
To Councilmember Gagliotti's point, that's certainly, and to Dino's point, that this wasn't cut from whole cloth, this was, you know, drafted at the, based on the existing ordinance, and that the direction of the planning commission. But to answer Councilmember Gagliotti's question, yes, it's totally acceptable and well within the discretion of the council as to eliminating the difference between temporary or permanent signs.
Any other council comments about that, or anything else to do with the sign ordinance?
I tend to want to still have a limit. I'd like to see the beauty of, understand everybody's right to free speech, but, you know, I don't want to get the city looking like everybody has signs in their yards. I'm not quite sure what the spirit of this whole conversation is. If people really want to have signs up all year round, I just, I have a problem with it. I just, I enjoy when I walk every day, seeing the beauty of people's front yards. And if everybody has a sign in their front yard, and there's no limit to it, I have a problem with that.
I just want to state that ancillary information signs, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, Dino, there is a maximum aggregate area of three square feet that, and those can be up all year, correct? I'm sorry?
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay.
But again, Mayor, those, at least as described in the definitions in the ordinance, we're talking about, you know, typical informational type signs, such as an alarm system sign in your front yard, beware of dog, those types of signs, rather than a freestanding sign in your front lawn, that's there all year round.
So to address the drive, like your kids live here, love is love, those, what's being proposed, I mean, if they're under three square feet, they could be up all year. Okay. Thank you for the clarity. I just want to make sure that I'm absolutely clear. So any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I wanted to ask one question. It sounded as though those two examples were different, like the slow for children would fall into the ancillary informational sign, and the love is love would be a personal feeling sign. So that seems as though that would fall into the temporary, the temporary sign distinction.
The love is love, what, how I hear it is the love is love is an ancillary sign as long as it's under three square feet. Is that correct?
Yes. And again, the duration comes down to the construction of the sign, not the message of the sign.
Yeah. Okay.
So I would actually like to make a motion to approve the sign ordinance with a couple of changes, one of which would be to collapse the awning and canopy descriptions. I'd like to strike the temporary signs cannot be used for more than 45 days.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm sorry, Pat, did you have a question?
Yes, I would like to propose that we accept it as written with the striking of the ancillary signs, and just accept it as presented tonight. I'd like to make that motion.
So could you please clarify exactly what you're wanting to delete, please?
Actually, point of order, Mayor, we have a, we have a motion and a second, and so we have to kind of vote on this. And if that fails, then I think that we could.
Right. But she just made it, and I'm looking for clarity. So bear with me just a minute.
So can't we make a counter proposal?
It's a secondary motion, but I'm looking for clarity from you, what you want deleted. We will vote on the first motion first.
Okay. Page.
So Pat, what we're going to do is, we're going to move forward and vote on the first motion, and see how that goes, and then we can come back.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. So we need to.
So the whole point of order, Mayor, actually, I think maybe then, if, I think it sounds better or more appropriate that Councilmember Lindtow would put in a substitute motion, we would vote on that first, and then if that failed, then we would vote on this. If we vote on this, then it stands. There's nothing, there's nothing more, there's no more action to be taken after that.
That's correct. And you may wish to inquire if Councilmember Lindtow would offer that as a friendly amendment to include the two other changes that were mentioned, or standalone, this is a substitute motion.
Got it. Pat, do you understand that?
So this is a standalone substitute motion, and it's on page 12, the ancillary signs, removal of that on page 12.
I believe that was already done. I think Alex, or.
Yes.
That was a change proposed.
That's already changed.
Yes.
You know, I think you were not, I don't think you were on line yet when that was mentioned.
Oh, maybe I wasn't in yet.
You've already been successful.
That's already been done.
So let's go back to the original motion, and we need to do a roll call vote. So Kim, could you walk us through that?
Wait, which one are we voting on? Sorry.
We're voting on to accept it, accept the sign ordinance with the shift in, we're going to strike the temporary signs cannot be used for more than 45 days, and we're going to combine the awning and the canopy descriptions together.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Okay. If, in fact, Councilmember Lindtow is making a substitute motion, and there is a second, it gets voted on first.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's not clear to me where we stand with that motion, and I just want to.
Got it. Got it.
Okay. I'm submitting a substitute motion, accepting the ordinance as proposed tonight.
And I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
No.
Councilmember Lindtow?
Yes.
Councilmember Getzel?
No.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
No.
Okay, so now we're going to vote on the original motion. And Kim, could you walk us through that, please?
Sure. Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Lindtow?
No.
Councilmember Getzel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
No.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
That's 3-2. Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for that vibrant conversation. I have a feeling we'll come back to this at some point. And thank you, Planning Commission, and city staff, and attorney for doing all this hard work to get us to this place.
If I may, before we move on, I just want to make sure we captured the motion clearly. Did I understand that the motion to be that you were recommending that the ordinance first reading be passed with the temporary period of 45 days being stricken?
From page 10.
From page 10. So no time limit on temporary signs?
I think that's what was passed.
Yeah.
Right.
That's how I understood it.
Yep, that's what I, and then collapsing awning and?
Canopy.
Canopy.
Canopy. Got it. Thank you.
Right. And so then, so Dino, there would be one other edit in that permitted signs where we have temporary, and I guess anything that references back to the 45 days, whether it be permit or temporary, that's how I understood that.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on to new business number C, receive a report on COVID-19-related budget impacts and consider cannabis business. and consider cannabis business tax deferral during the emergency period.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, as is obvious to most, the public health measures taken to combat the spread of the COVID-19 virus have had a profound impact on our local businesses. And that, that effect is translating to an impact on our municipal budget, in particular, in the last three months of this fiscal year during this emergency period. And so the matter before you is to receive a report on the budget impacts, on the one hand, what the city is doing to try to mitigate expenditures to get us through the end of the year. And also to consider for action approving a deferral of cannabis business tax during the emergency period. To summarize, we are, we are taking a small hit to our transient occupancy tax due to short-term rentals being prohibited during this period. We are going to lose about $2,500 in TOT. We're going to defer collection of rent on our two city-owned properties to the extent that both business owners avail themselves of the rent deferral. We will see a $21,000 deferred revenue into next fiscal year from that. The sales tax impact, the governor has authorized a, two actions. One is a deferral of sales tax for 90 days. And the other is allocating that sales tax over the next 12 months in terms of repaying it. The impact on the city is about $50,000 in lost sales tax revenue. That's just from closures of Tarpees, closures of some of our other businesses and a downward a loss of business in even the businesses that are staying open, with the notable exception of Safeway, of course, which is terribly busy and that's a great thing. We'll see a deferral of $45,000 in sales tax based on the governor's order. And that's tax that should be paid this fiscal year, but will be deferred to next fiscal year and paid out over the 12 months of that fiscal year. The plan checks and permit fees, we're going to see a loss of about $28,000 in revenue due to the fact that construction is not allowed during the emergency period. So we're not seeing plans approved and checked by city staff and building permits issued during this time. The subtotal of all of that revenue loss is $80,000 of lost revenue and $66,000 of deferred revenue for a total of about $146,000 of combined loss and deferral in the next three months. On top of that, if you approve the deferral of cannabis business tax, the deferral would be $210,000 of tax. And that's, that is the maximum that we could see and that we anticipate seeing deferred into next fiscal year based on our current projections, bringing the total of lost and deferred revenue to $356,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. By way of, just explaining that cannabis business tax deferral a bit more, two of our businesses have come and asked for deferral. And one is, well, I won't even name them, two have come and asked. And, and they are both doing great business in the city. I will say that, and I think they're on the line with us tonight as well. This, if council approved a deferral during the emergency period to be repaid in the first 120 days of the next fiscal year, or not, of the 120 days following the end of the emergency period, that would only be offered to businesses in good standing. Businesses that are paid up in their taxes, current other business permits and operating, again, in good standing. Estimated cost avoidance, how are we going to get from here to there? We already showed $176,000 deficit for the remainder of the fiscal year based on the mid-year budget analysis. So this adds to that a significant amount and we looked hard at how we could mitigate the revenue shortfall. And I want to thank the whole team, especially Chief and Kim and Karen for really digging deep into our budget and finding where we could, and Ron, where we could find some savings. What we came up with was by letting our part-time seasonal employee go, by carrying one empty or vacant police position and reducing overtime and reserve payroll, we think we can save $108,000 in payroll for the next three months. That's really tightening down on staffing and we believe we can do that. And I'll just frame all of this by saying, these are emergency measures. This isn't a steady state type of budget, but for the next three months, we can do this. We believe we can shave $37,000 from supply and operations. We think we can save about $48,000 in consultant costs. And by deferring, not canceling, deferring our Capitol Roads project for street slurry, our solar panel project for City Hall and the design project for our sewer line on South Boundary Road, that can defer $310,000 in expenditures for a total of $504,000 of savings and deferred expenditures in the case of the project. Should it come to pass that the recession is deeper and broader than we think at the moment and we continue to try to figure out how to make ends meet, it may be the case that we return to council and recommend that those capital projects be canceled. That is not what we're suggesting tonight and so no action is required on that. But that is an option for the city if it comes to that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, the action, the action that staff is requesting tonight is that with the totality of the revenue loss and the savings presented to you tonight, we're recommending that you approve a deferral of cannabis business tax during the emergency period for businesses in good standing to be repaid over 120 days after the end. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Mayor.
Thank you, John. So we're going to go in order. So let's start with Vice Mayor Clark.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be gracious and do this. I think everybody's having a hard time. The businesses that I work for are having a hard time and I just, I think it's important that we do it for the businesses that are in good standing with the city. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lintel?
Yes, I agree with Christian. I think for those who are, those businesses who are in good standing, we need to be considerate of them. Everybody's having a hard time now. And I think it's, it would behoove us to approve this tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Getzel?
First of all, I want to thank the city staff, everybody that worked to squeeze those pennies till they're squealing all the way to San Francisco. And, you know, looking at our other cities, we're actually doing much better than they are because we're small and because we have multitask capability staff. And I think we did a great job in planning ahead. And I'm hoping that, you know, right now it looks like we don't have to go into our rainy day fund, which would be great. And I do appreciate the businesses we have here. They're great partners in our communities. And if they're in good standings, then I support deferring the cannabis.
Great, thanks. John?
So I share the general sentiment of the rest of the council, but I do have one question is what's our ability to recover? Or what's our, what do we have to do if in fact we give this deferral and then the businesses do default and they actually go under? Then we're left with basically a hole there. So what's our ability to recover from that scenario?
Mayor, if I may? The, if the business goes under, John, that leaves us in a position where I'd have to consult on how they would be liquidated and where our taxes would be racked and stacked in terms of their debt service. But I think it's probably a safe assumption to think that we would very possibly not see that revenue if they went out of business, which is exactly what we're trying to do.
Could we, no, I totally get it. I'm just saying, you know, you always, when you do these kind of things, you always look at the bookends, right? So the, or the guardrails. I guess the one thing is that would they be open to signing something to make us creditor first payment? You know, like if they defaulted and they were in kind of a fire sale, some sort of an asset sale, that we would get first creditor status? Some sort of agreement?
Certainly something we can look into. John, I haven't looked into that and I think Alex and I would have to do a little homework.
Okay.
Great.
But I share the general sentiment. I mean, I, right now I feel like we support this. I would just love to see some kind of protection built into that rather than just kind of a, let's just roll the dice together.
Great. So I just want to say, I am also, I feel very fortunate that we live in a city that is in as good of a shape as we are for all kinds of reasons, right? I personally think we're doing better because we're not relying on hospitality, which, you know, you just look at Monterey and see what that is, that's doing. But I of course want to support our folks that may be suffering just like the rest of us. So on that, I'd like to go out for public comment. Anyone have public comment? Please raise your hand.
Let's see, anybody?
Adam? Kim, have you got Adam?
Yep, he's unmuted. Go ahead, Adam.
Okay.
Hello, hello everyone. Yeah, I just want to say thanks. It's really nice to come together with everybody in the, you know, in the Delaware ALEX community during this tough time. Now, this is actually like one of the biggest social gatherings I've been to in the last like two months.
I'm doing this all the time.
Yeah, I will. And, you know, I definitely hear all of the financial stresses and lost revenues that the city has incurred or, you know, due to COVID and I, you know, we don't want to as a business in the city to be an additional burden in any way. And I know that the deferral of taxes is, does do that in the short run. I also am very hopeful that and confident, I can't predict everything perfectly, but I'm very hopeful that this, I know that it will help reduce the existential risk of our business, you know, going under and gives us a lot, it really helps, you know, bridge the gap in our cash that has, you know, been affected by the COVID crisis. Helps us, it would very much help us get to, you know, weather the storm and make it over the hill and get, and continue to thrive with the city and continue to be a partner with the city in the long run. And so I really appreciate this being all you guys taking the time and effort to put this on the agenda and to consider it. It's, I know that that's going above and beyond of what, you know, the duties of the city is and making, considering an exceptional circumstance. And so, yeah, other than that, you know, I do believe we're going to come out of this and come back stronger than ever. And I hope he feels that too. And honestly, over the past couple of weeks, things have been starting to look up. There was a real bottoming out at the end of March and beginning of April due to a COVID order, a shelter in place order in Santa Clara County. And that, that put a big dent into our, it created a deficit for us of $150,000 during those four weeks. Basically, the last two weeks of March and the first two weeks of April. And that has, the order has changed as of about a week ago. And so things have started to pick back up. And so I just want to express that if we, if this tax deferral happens, it will definitely help us bridge it in the short term. And I believe strongly that we will make it out of it and be able to repay everything that we, that is getting deferred. And although I can't make any guarantees about the success of our business, I absolutely guarantee that we will do everything we can to fulfill our commitment to the city with our taxes and every, any other commitments we have. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Adam. Any other public comments? I see no hands. So I'm going to come back to the council. Vice Mayor Clark, any last minute?
No, I just, I think that, you know, we're taking a risk regardless if we do this or not. They could go under and we won't get it anyway. I think that grace during this period of time, hopefully they will put us on their top priority to pay us back.
Wonderful.
Do you want, do you want to, would you like a motion?
I just want to, I'm just going to go through everybody, make sure that there's no last minute questions.
Got it, okay.
And then I'll ask, Councilwoman Lintel?
Yes, I like John's idea of having something in writing, perhaps prioritizing the repayment to the city. I think that would be a good thing. And, but I do feel that we have wonderful businesses and we have had a lot of support from them and that we in turn need to support them. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Getzel?
I agree with Pat that as with any deferred debt, some type of agreement, written agreement is, I think, as guardians of our fiduciary our fiduciary responsibility to the city and the citizens is to make sure that that there is some kind of agreement when, with, in written agreement with this deferral. But we have great businesses that support the city and we need to support them too.
Okay. Councilman Gagliotti?
No, I have no comment.
Okay, so I'd like to ask Dino and Alex what might be involved in some kind of an agreement? Do you have thoughts on that?
I do. I'll defer to Alex and then speak.
Okay.
So the, with regard to the tax, the city has the ability to lean the properties of these businesses. Now, one of them, I understand rents from the city, but certainly we could endeavor to execute some sort of security agreement with these, with these entities in the case that the city was not repaid, whether that be on a building they own or their inventory or accounts receivable or whatever that might be. That would take a piece of research. What I might suggest is that if the council was so inclined to accept this proposal and this resolution, provide further direction to the city attorney to draft something with the two respective businesses that would, to the extent possible, secure. the two respective businesses that would, to the extent possible, secure the city's payment in addition to the other remedies the city might have in the municipal code and work with the city manager to get that done.
Thank you. Dino?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. I'd like to ask Adam how he feels about that?
Yeah, I mean, I am absolutely open to and would be happy to kind of hear whatever proposals the city may come up with and want to try to work out. Yeah, absolutely. I hear, rather than, I mean, I don't know, it's hard to comment too much without knowing exactly what type of proposal there may be. But yeah, I'd be certainly open to it or interested to, happy to hear whatever the thoughts are.
Thank you. So our current, the current deadline is 120 days from the end of the declared state of emergency and we're talking about $210,000. It feels like we're asking a lot in a short amount of time as things are kicking back up. I am not opposed to having some kind of a document, but I think realistically with that kind of seriousness, I'd like to extend the repayment period by, you know, rather than four months, maybe six months. Kristen?
Maybe we can do it in the form of a note versus making it so complicated. I don't know if we want their inventory.
Oh, speak for yourself, yeah, right.
Anyway.
You said bring it on.
But maybe just as, you know, a nice, simple, clean note. And that's probably more than what other creditors would have, so. That's it.
Okay. So, yeah, I would like to, so following Alex's suggestion that we approve this with further direction to look at some kind of a documentation with a commitment. And I would also like to add that we extend it to six months.
I'll second.
So I'd like, I'd like to ask a friendly amendment to that and do the first part for sure and keep it to four months, but maybe have a review, put in a review period and come to them, you know, maybe in between that, maybe in two months and get a sense on are they going to be healthier in the next two or the next six months or are they going to be, does it look more? And make that decision later rather than right now.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call, please, Kim.
So would you please identify what we're voting on at this point?
If the friendly amendment was accepted.
Yeah.
So are we voting on extending the timeframe?
Right now, the motion is that we extend it by, we extend it to six months and that we direct staff to come up with a note or excuse me, exploratory kind of securitization language or an agreement, draft agreement with that or note or a formal agreement. I am asking the maker of the motion for a friendly amendment to keep it to four months, but add some, add a review period in the next two months or, you know, in the middle of that grace period to get a better understanding of the health of the organization.
Okay.
And if they need it, then, yeah, if they need it, then we can come back and we can extend it at that point, you know, to six months.
Okay, I second your motion, John.
Well, it's not, that's not me. The maker of the motion has to agree to that friendly amendment.
I agree.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Can we do a roll call, please, Kim?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lintel?
Yes.
Councilmember Getzel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
So it's approved. Thank you all. So we're done with new business. Phew. And we're moving on to staff reports. City manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Community continues to care for one another, you know, in a really terrific way. Makes me proud to be associated with Delray Oaks. As the mayor mentioned, there was a change to the shelter in place order requiring masks that goes into effect in a couple of days and we'll be continuing to stay in touch with the county as well as the cities around us in the days ahead and continue to send out updates to our residents and businesses through a push email system to keep everyone as informed as possible. I had a virtual coffee with city manager last night that had two wonderful attendees. I think there's something to scheduling those on a night with a busy meeting from somewhere else. But it was, it was a pleasure to spend a bit of time with two residents catching up. And I know the mayor is sending out updates as well and holding virtual meetings weekly, which I very much enjoy participating in and appreciate that. The Monterey Bay Defense Alliance met virtually to discuss a request to the state and federal authorities to fund shovel-ready infrastructure projects on the Monterey Peninsula to help strengthen the resiliency of our military installations and that we're continuing to press with that request to see if we can get it worked into future legislation. Staff met regarding Mr. Mori's conditional use permit application. His application has kind of combines correcting deficiencies we've identified in his current operation with desires for a very interesting, intriguing expansion project. I spoke with Mr. Mori and urged him to take advantage of this period of closure to bring himself into compliance with his conditional use permit. Once we've inspected and certified that he's compliant, we can schedule.
You know, you vanished so like two sentences ago.
Oh.
Oh, I can still see and hear him.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe it's my internet.
He moved.
I moved?
You moved. Yeah, moved down and over.
All right.
My chest.
All right. Well, listen, that about wraps it up. A couple of quick additions there is, are that, you know, we're continuing to work with fora to establish an escrow account to transfer $8.3 million to the city to fund the completion of the South Boundary Road redesign and construction, including a bike path there along the South Boundary Road. We are beginning some moves inside city hall of some furniture while we're working from home to locate Kim in the office across from mine so she can close the door and get some work done in relative quiet, focusing on the finances. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, we earned the title of Tree City USA. And there's a lot of thanks to go around for that. But certainly Scott Donaldson and his push to get 100 oaks planted in town, Mr. Mori contributing oaks for the Rosie to Triangle and a lot of the work that Ron has done around the city to keep our trees trimmed and beautiful and healthy. That's exciting. Those who have been down to the park may have seen that our lion is back and working, beautifully refurbished with an operating water fountain in it. And finally, I just want to again, just mention that it's wonderful to see a city come together and deal with challenges. It brings out the best and the worst in people and I'm glad to say that for the most part, I've seen only the best. So that concludes my report.
Wonderful, thank you. Vice Mayor Clark?
I did not attend MST as I was in a place where I had no internet at the time. But I have seen since Pat Lintel attended that meeting for me. But I did get word via email just in the past few days that you must have a mask to be on the bus from here on out. And also the line 82 and line 85 that takes you to the very south county down toward Hunter Lickett has been suspended due to just no activity. That's it.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Lintel?
Yes. All the meetings are now on Zoom, although I did one that was on a television. So it's new technology for me. So at Seaside Sanitation, we approved an agreement with the city of Seaside to reimburse the city for upgrades to the sanitary sewer system as part of the pavement rehab project. It'll be about $64,000. It will save in the long run because it will not, it will not have a duplication of work. So it was something that we had to do in the future. And so while the street is being dug up, we can take care of that at this time. We also approved the professional engineering services agreement with the Wallace Group for an amount not to exceed $254,557 with the Fremont Broadway and Ortiz Sewer Main Upgrade Project. And the MST, as Kristen mentioned, I attended as alternate. And since it's late, the highlights are included in the packet. So we'll go into that. And the Community Human Services, we approved a 10% hero pay for the frontline workers, those who are dealing with the public and all. And we also approved a layoff or a reduction of hours as presented, which will affect six or seven people. So, and that concludes my report. Oh, I can't hear you, Allison.
She's muted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Getzel?
My full report is in the packet. There is no Veterans Council meeting, United Veterans Council meeting last month and I don't think there's going to be one tomorrow, nor the Retiree Council. Retiree Appreciation Day is still scheduled for the 3rd of July, pardon me, 2nd of July at DLI. That's still up in the air. I did see in today's paper that La Mariana is canceled. So I'm not sure what Monterey is going to do, but it's 250th birthday celebrations because that's this year. So pretty much housekeeping things at the mosquito abatement district and there was no Ambac meeting. So not a lot to report.
Okay, thanks, Louise. Councilman Gagliotti?
Yeah, so on the forefront, we closed down the, or we came up with a resolution for the habitat conservation plan. It's basically been abandoned, but that group is recommending to the board that we certify the final EIR and then let the individual jurisdictions basically have that fight individually on capturing or getting individual take permits and their own kind of habitat conservation areas individually with the agency. So that was the recommendation to the board and that then also in becoming, the finalization of the EIR should be completed if not this next, if not the end of May, probably it'll be the first meeting in June, which will be our last meeting. We did, we were very successful and I kind of thought that Dino would take more credit because he deserves more credit. But we have officially secured the $8.3 million from fora. There was kind of some, there was a potential that we may lose some of that, but it all basically came out for the good and so we got that. So that's all very, very good. We did not have any, we've not had actually two of the seaside water basin, seaside water master basin meetings in the last couple of months. And then the, then last night, as was commented on earlier, at the Monterey Water, the board decided to not certify the EIR. And I'll speak to my reasons on that. First of all, just on the comments, I mean, the four people who spoke, I've spoken to two of them at length and I'm not going to convince them of really any, of any preconceived notion that they already have. So, you know, that's, that's just an effort that we're never, we're never going to see eye to eye on that and I recognize that. And so we're just all going to have to agree to disagree on that. But the larger kind of question is, and this is what basically I would say, the majority of the board has been asking staff is that we, there is no project. And that's been the problem is that there is no project called a pure water Monterey Expansion Project and it's because there is no water. And the SEIR was getting out ahead of any kind of viable project. We were doing environmental review of a project that didn't exist and I said that last night. My comments were extensive. I've studied this issue actually literally since November and I've been back and forth with staff and I've done a lot of my own, my own research. And it all basically comes down to the amended and restated water resource agreement is that there is no project. And, you know, Paul Shudo stood before our own board and told us that we had all this water. And I've had numerous conversations with him, where is the water? Show me this, put it in a table. And he would say, it's in the agreement. And then when, and he would say, okay, where are we with Salinas? We're negotiating with Salinas, we're almost to an agreement. And then I go talk to Salinas and they say, absolutely not, we are nowhere near an agreement. Same thing with Water Resources Board. So what's been presented and what is in reality are two different things. And that is very much the case with water on the peninsula. And that's been kind of my key learning in this year of being on that board is that you can be told one thing, but unless you go verify it yourself and go talk to the stakeholders yourself, you can believe what you can believe, but you have to verify. It's a trust to verify situation. And last night, that board sent a message to staff that the theater is over. And if they're going to bring a viable project, then they have to start with where are we going to get the water from? We aren't, the purpose of that EIR was really brought into kind of in light or, it was suspect. It was why are we, why is there this chorus to go out and certify an EIR for a project that doesn't exist? Why is that? It doesn't help anybody. It doesn't push the wall forward. It doesn't make, it doesn't make any future project or needed project that much more viable or happen that much faster. All it does is it disrupts another process. And that's exactly what was going on there last night. So that's why I voted the way I did. I tried to explain this to a number of residents. They're not, and I've had, you know, lots of discussions with people who support Land Watch and people, Public Water Now people. I mean, I talked to everybody and people are just not going to believe, I mean, they're only going to believe what they're going to believe. And that's kind of the nature of the water politics on this peninsula. But, you know, I somewhat take personal the attacks, but I also recognize that, you know, there's a lot of passion and people are just going to believe what they're going to believe. So that's my report.
Thank you. So I have been busier than ever. I kept thinking I would get a little time, but it just doesn't work out that way. First and foremost, there in the packet, there's a trip report from a conference I attended in Yosemite. I spoke a little bit about it during the last council meeting, so I'm not going to now, but I just wanted to get that report on the record. There's also the TMC Board Minute highlights, except we've had two meetings. And so I'll ask for the April 22nd meeting to be included for next month's packet. Each Monday, I attend two different Zoom calls, excuse me, that keep me up to date on a lot of the COVID-19 related issues locally. One is a district forum meeting with Supervisor Parker, Mayor Delgado, Oglesby and Gunter as well as city managers, ours joins as well. And then directly following, there's a California OES meeting for all Northern California electeds and staff. So I'm getting information locally as well as for the state. When, we used to do a once a month meeting for all of the Monterey County mayors and I asked if we could have it every other week so that So that is happening just so each of the cities is being affected very differently. It's helpful for us all to understand where we're at and we'll have county folks come and share particular information as well. So that's happening. To help disseminate the information I'm providing, I am holding weekly community campfires every Thursday at 5:00. They have gotten pretty informal lately, basically as a means to check in with folks, to see how they're doing. And there's a small but, you know, dedicated group of folks that comes together to tell me all about the good things that are happening for them and their neighbors. I'm also sending updates as Dino mentioned. We usually, there's usually a day or two in between the two of us. And so that also is another way to get the information out for residents highlighting not only the updates, but also the activities of our residents, our very clever and kind residents. April 1st, we had a dialogue with Monterey Bay Economic Partnerships, Matt Huerta, city staff and city planning contractors to discuss how they might be able to help us have a robust public input into any development prior to the developer being selected. And so that is ongoing. I have my monthly What's On Your Mind Zoom meeting on Saturday, the 4th. Saturday, April 18th, we had the mayor's advisory committee on arts and culture meet. Dino has graciously given them permission to chalk temporarily, chalk uplifting messages on streets and/or fences. And you can see some on, some fences on Carlton, there's a beautiful sun and, you know, some stuff like that. More will be coming. And then last Friday, I attended the governor's task force on testing webinar where they shared important news about the 80 upcoming new testing facilities that will be placed throughout the state that will be tied to the 10 million swabs that they've ordered that are coming through. So they will be doing the testing, but these facilities will stay where they are. So hopefully when we get a vaccination, they can be dispensed there as well. They're locating them throughout the state based on ensuring that people only have one hour to go to visit them. So there's a lot of, they did not share the actual locations though. And the other exciting thing is they're extending the criteria for testing to include asymptomatic first responders. So that's fabulous. So we know our nurses and our firefighters and our police will be tested hopefully pretty soon. On that, that's it for me. So next, we're going to move correspondence. We're not going to go into, but the MST board meeting highlights and the TMC board meeting highlights are included. Last thing on the agenda is a closed session that, sorry, I'm reading through, has to do with, be a conference with legal counsel about existing litigation, government code 54956.9A, Land Watch Monterey County versus the city of Delray Oaks. So at this time, I'd like to go out, before we move to closed session, go out for public comment if anyone has a comment on the litigation. I am not seeing any hands. So I'm going to close public comment and at that, we're going to.
Karen, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you, sorry. Before we adjourn, I just forgot two very important points I want to make. And the first is that part of the reason we're able to save on consultant fees is that Chief Hoin has really stepped up, taking full advantage of his command staff to delegate some responsibilities to them for day-to-day management of the police department and stepped into an assistant city manager role for me. And he wrote that staff report on the foretag, a report in your council packets tonight. And he's taken the lead on implementing some important HR, human resources recommendations that were made to us by our consultant. So thanks, Jeff. And lastly, I was very remiss not to mention Karen Minami's role in us being a Tree City USA. She bird dogged the application from start to finish, figured it out, applied, got it in there and that's why we're a Tree City USA. So thank you to Karen, that's all, Mayor.
All right. Okay, thank you. So back to public comment, I am not seeing any public comment about the litigation. So I'm going to close public comment and we're going to move to a closed session. So we will be moving to a different area. So if you would like to stay, you can stay in this space. We will move and then we'll come back after our closed session. But if not, have a wonderful evening, stay safe out there and maybe we'll see you in a few minutes. Thank you.